You put food?
Yes, now six thirty. I'd like to call this City Council meeting of July the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Cosner.
Here.
Councilman Nestor.
Present.
Councilperson Thomas.
Here.
Councilor Chakowski.
Here.
Mayor Mosher.
Present.
Mayor, we note five members present and a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Reverend John Cooster to come up from Orchard Church Christian Fellowship and lead us in prayer. Here's a mic you can use.
Amen. Let's pray. Lord, tonight, we just give thanks for your loving kindness over this city, and we just want your kingdom to come and your will to be done. We're praying for that tonight. We love you. We are with you and for you. And so we ask you tonight here for your blessing. I pray you'd reward all of these wonderful people in this room who have stepped forward to lead and pick up responsibility. I pray you'd pour upon them wisdom, guidance, so that we could be the city that you designed. We want your design, not necessarily ours, but yours is the best. And so we ask your blessing upon everybody here. We ask this because of your unending good plan, your unending love for this city. That's why we're asking. Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I believe the minutes for the previous session of June the thirteenth have been circulated. If everybody's had a chance to review them, could somebody make a motion to accept them?
Mayor, motion to approve the previous minutes of our council meeting on June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mosher.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to invite the public for any comments on agenda items only.
Ernest Telegraphus, Twenty-Nine Rex Boulevard. Now, I'd like to get down to the K about getting bids for a new dump truck. Now, where are we getting this dump truck at? And who is doing the negotiations? You, Tony?
The, the truck was and could be from any place that takes either Coastars or has a vehicle on the lot. I've been trying to find a vehicle that's sitting on a lot that's available to purchase, something that we don't have to wait four months, three months, five months. I know it's not snowing, but I'm saying now's the time to start doing that versus waiting till something happens in October.
Okay, so did you find one?
I found two.
Two? Where at?
They were both in Ohio. I didn't find any locally. Not saying we still haven't tried, but one of them passed.
One of them passed? What do you say?
It was sold.
Oh, well, they didn't pass for us.
It's not like, it's not like if we were buying a vehicle and you go in and you want to put a deposit down fifty bucks to hold your car, that new car for tomorrow. It doesn't work that way. Okay? They're not going to hold a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar vehicle because we have to.
Is that what you're looking at? A hundred and fifty thousand?
Come down. We have to, we had to make a motion. We had to advertise. There had to be bids. There had to be a different process because the place that I had found one that was totally equipped was out of state, which means they didn't participate in Coastars. Am I correct?
You're correct.
Joe, thank you. All right. So it's a little bit longer of a process or more involved than if somebody had one sitting on a lot or, say, C. Harper, which they didn't have one, say, okay, this is Coastar pricing. Here it is. Boom. We can go with it. We don't have to do any of it.
Did you check with Davis Ford?
I went searching on the web and everywhere looking for one.
Well, I want to know why aren't we first attempting to work with the same people, McKeithport, White Oak, that sold us the other Ford trucks? Because they will give you a better deal since it's coming from them.
Not necessarily. That's not true.
Well, did you try? You didn't try.
I was trying to find something first.
Well, when would you try something first? First of all?
We got a bid. No, wait. We got a bid from C. Harper and the company that outfits their, it's outfits the truck, and it came in at a hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
Okay, and it was in Ohio? Where is it?
No, C. Harper.
Okay. How much was Ohio's?
Let me get there. Jumping ahead a little bit already. Give me a chance to make the story before I say anything. Okay? That was a hundred and eleven thousand dollars without a plow and without a salt spreader.
C. Harper.
Well, C. Harper provides the chassis and the vehicle. The outfitting place provides the bed and everything else.
And what did that total to? Hundred and eleven thousand?
Thank you, Ernie. You're paying attention.
No, I just wanted to know because you threw me a curve when you separated it.
Well, I'm trying to separate it so it makes sense. So we had that at a hundred and eleven thousand dollars that we also was given. Okay? It didn't have a plow. It did not have a salt spreader because they were going to use the city's extra. I believe they have an extra spreader and a plow.
Does it fit the truck?
It should.
Well, you're saying it should. Did you bring Rodney down there with you so he could see?
We've been in touch with the street department and all the way back and forth to give them ideas and different. I've sent them pictures of some stuff that I've found and things of that nature. We're not rushing into this.
Well, if you're not rushing into it, did you try seeing if you could repair any of the previous trucks that we got?
We're also doing that at the same time. So we're not trying to take a vehicle out of service completely. We're trying to add one that we have money in the ARP funds right now to be able to pay for one. Now, if you'll let me finish on a little bit of the numbers, it was a hundred and eleven thousand, as I've said unfortunately for the fourth time, without a plow, without a salt spreader. Okay? It also was an aluminum bed. Okay? The one that I had found in Ohio, Columbus, Ohio, is a full package. It's a hundred and thirteen thousand, and it has a full plow, new plow on it. It's one of the V plows. It's adjustable. All right? It has a new salt spreader on it, which takes both calcium, liquid. It takes calcium or it takes the hard rock salt. Okay? After, for them to get it here will be another thirteen hundred dollars for them to flatbed it here. So I don't know what the bid was because I haven't seen them yet, but they were open. Mike, were they open today?
Yes.
Okay.
We have them in the packet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't get that far. So it was around a hundred and fifteen thousand. Okay? Total, front to back, brand new, everything. All I did was initiate to find vehicles or a vehicle, unfortunately, get the pricing on it, inform council, and tell council if we want something like this and it's out of state, we need to turn around and advertise for bid. That's all that has happened so far.
Okay, so you haven't committed the city to nobody?
That is all that has happened so far, which is farther than where we've been before.
Okay, so we should table this today, right?
We're not tabling nothing because there's nothing to table.
Oh, okay. Then I don't know why.
So I don't know why you were talking for twenty minutes because there's nothing going on.
I wasn't talking for twenty minutes.
There's nothing going on.
But anyway, I, I just hope you guys are working on this together. Can't you ask Rodney to drive down or take a bus down and he drives it back so we could save fifteen hundred bucks?
Why would I want to put a couple hundred miles on a vehicle that is brand new?
Well, does he get to see if it's good or not?
No, they don't want to, look, Ernie, they didn't want to, the gentleman from the dealership did not, were offered to drive it here, but they didn't want to drive a F-550 with a V plow in the middle of frickin' summer going down the turnpike.
Well, what's going to happen? He ain't going to crash into anybody.
He didn't feel comfortable driving it or his guy to drive it.
Maybe he's bashful. But anyway, you should have Rodney drive it back. Then he could tell if the truck is worth it or not.
I'm not having anybody drive it back. We're going to see what we have to do. The other one that we lost, we didn't get, they offered to deliver it for free.
Who's that? A different company?
Yes.
Can't you tell them to take that other truck from the other company and they take it?
Ernie, this isn't like you're going to buy a car from this company and it's on a different, different dealer lot and you're going to turn around and say. It doesn't work that way.
All right. So when do you think you have a suggestion of which way we're going?
I made my suggestion. It's up to council to deliberate and talk about it and see where they want to go. I've, I've done the work.
Well, who's thinking of if we could repair the pre, the old ones we got? Who's doing that?
There's POs already in to get the trucks already fixed.
All right. I just don't want you guys buying this, buying that, and then we can't make it to November. I have a question here. Who's in charge of N. on page four, discussion of activities, the work development projects, USDA, the DCD? Who's that?
That's me.
Okay, can you expand on that a little bit?
I will when I get to it. I'll try to explain that.
Right now, it looks like we're dealing with the, the alphabet agencies of the federal government.
You're exactly right.
All right, there one last question here. What is this motion to take three police officers to Police Accountability and Internal Affairs? Do they commit a crime or what?
No, that's a, that is a board that, maybe you can explain it better.
Yeah, that's, if you remember last meeting, there was a resident asking why he was not reappointed to the Police Accountability and Review Board. There's some vacancies there. This is appointing residents to that board. That, that's what this is. They're not police officers. They're citizens.
Okay, so all three of them got to go where? Subject themselves to this board?
They volunteered for the board.
Okay, and what's the purpose? So they get hired?
They, they review police policies and some complaints that are levied against the police.
So I have one last question on this. Do we got the money to hire three new cars?
They're not employees, Ernie. They're volunteers.
Volunteers, okay. All right. That solves that problem.
Is there anybody else with questions on the agenda? I'll try to explain that in detail. I can't hear it so very much. Do you may have any correspondence that they'd like to bring forth?
No, Mayor.
This time, I'd like to ask the listener for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Just to finish discussing the Police Accountability Board, the resident that was here did make mention of whether or not the mayor should be on the board. The answer is no. The city's going to have to take a look at that ordinance. Mayor, if any issues pop up, it's my recommendation not to participate. The reason being is you are a supervisor of the police per the third-class city code. Any recommendation should come to you but not be influenced by you. So we'll have to take a look at that ordinance.
That sounds good.
On tonight's agenda, you'll see a couple of things involving the PennDOT Construction Management System. This has kind of been in the works for the last two, three years. It, it's a, involves a project with the Viaduct. Still a lot of more information the city needs. What's on tonight's agenda is just a resolution that sets forth who can sign on behalf of the city, the mayor and the city clerk, as well as the agreement that they can participate in the construction management system. There are federal and state monies available to do some work on the bridge. The scope of that work is unknown. The engineers have been involved, have an initial analysis of what needs fixed, and PennDOT's going to host a teams meeting with the city next Wednesday to hopefully finalize the scope. It's important because PennDOT wants the grant reimbursement agreement executed by the end of the year. Also, on tonight's agenda, you'll see two items involving West Moreland Community Action, a couple of transfers of property. One was approved last July by the city. The deeds were just never drafted. Community Action needs those. The second item are three new properties that the Community Action would like. They're putting in low-income modular housing homes. Mr. Orchakowski already talked about the legal ad for the Public Works Truck. I believe the deadline to submit the bids was this afternoon. Correct, Mr. Porpos? That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to ask the city treasurer for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, and citizens of Monessa. It's my six-month report for January through June of two thousand and twenty-four. Garbage fees and city real estate taxes collected for the month of June. Garbage fees revenues, current, from June, we received five thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. Year-to-date, three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Budget amount, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Garbage fees delinquent, four thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents in June. The amount collected by Portnoy in June, including the above amount, was one thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Year-to-date, garbage fees delinquent, thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. This amount by Portnoy was collected and it was included in the above amount was fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-two cents. Budget amount for two thousand and twenty-four was seventy-five thousand. Portnoy also collected penalties and interest on delinquent accounts which came to a total of nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Budget amount was two thousand, five hundred dollars. Garbage fees collected for two thousand and twenty-five, seven hundred and sixty dollars year-to-date. Total budget amount for garbage in two thousand and twenty-four is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total for the month of June, nine thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and thirty-one cents. Year-to-date, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Budget amount for two thousand and twenty-four, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. City real estate taxes, current, in June, we collected sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty cents. Year-to-date, one million, eight hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Budget amount was one million, six hundred thousand. Prior cities, prior years collected by the city on city taxes was total year-to-date, twenty-two thousand, forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Budget amount, seven thousand dollars. Total taxes collected by the city for real estate, one million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Delinquent city taxes collected by Westmoreland County, June, we received eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Year-to-date, a hundred and sixty-three thousand, six dollars and twenty-two cents. Budget amount, a hundred and sixty thousand. Total year-to-date taxes for delin, for delinquent real estate, two million, fifteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Budget amount, one million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Distribution is as followed. Year-to-date, this is for the general fund, was distributed one million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Budget amount, one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, a hundred and twenty dollars. Debt service, year-to-date, distributed three hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and ninety-one cents. Budget amount, three hundred and two thousand, eighty dollars. Library, year-to-date, but collected, distribution, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and six cents. Budget amount, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Parks, distributed for the year, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. Budget amount, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Year-to-date, total distribution, one million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Budget amount for two thousand and twenty-four was one million, six hundred thousand. Miscellaneous income account, real estate transfer tax. Real estate, in June, we received eleven thousand, five hundred and one dollars and sixteen cents. Year-to-date, thirty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-six cents. Budget amount, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Earned income tax, June, sixty thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and five cents. Year-to-date, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and five cents. Budget amount, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, forty-eight dollars. Mercantile tax, June, we received one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Year-to-date, seventeen thousand, twenty dollars and ninety-six cents. Budget amount, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Local service tax, June, we received one thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifteen cents. Year-to-date, thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and four cents. Budget amount, seventy-one thousand, seventy-two dollars. Tax certification we received in June, two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Year-to-date, eleven thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Budget amount, twenty thousand dollars. Municipal lien letters, June, we received one thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Year-to-date, seven thousand, fifty dollars. Budget amount, seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Line usage account, June, there was nothing, nothing received. Year-to-date, that's for unsecured payments, which came to ten thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars for year-to-date. Line usage fees, June, we received seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and seventeen cents. Year-to-date, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents. Total year-to-date, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. If anybody would like a copy of this report, you can see me after the meeting. That includes my report, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, motion to approve the treasurer's report for garbage fees and C. Real Estate taxes collected for the month of June.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mosher.
Yes. The city controller is, has let me know she would not be here this evening and she'll hold her report. She'll have her report next meeting we have. Which takes us to new business. There's a couple of things I'd like to kind of talk about. I'm going to talk about these.
What about the audit?
The audit. Oh, yes. That's important stuff here. That's good stuff. At this time, I'd like to invite Cypher and Cypher to come up and present their audit for the year two thousand and twenty-three. Do you have that mic?
Yeah.
Give, give him that mic.
Sorry.
I thought you wanted me to talk.
Thank you, Mayor, for creating the introduction. Evening, council. Thanks for having us here this evening. We've given you the copy of the audit report, the presentation that is also on the board and a copy of the management. What we're going to do is go through the presentation, discuss the results of the two thousand and twenty-three audit. So we'll go to page two. The reason we're here is the city code under which we operate on the wealth management requires an annual audit of the city's financial statements. In this case, you can see twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. I'll do my best. The important thing for council and the mayor to keep in mind is that everything in the financial statements is a responsibility of the city's management. Our responsibility is to use U.S. auditing standards to conduct an audit. The purpose of audit is to tell you whether the financial statements represent where you were at December thirty vote and how you got there. You notice at the bottom of the page two, our opinion is unmodified. That's exactly the opinion that you want to have. Anything less than that is completely unacceptable. The interesting thing about this year, and it's a result of COVID, the pandemic, is that we received quite a bit of federal money, and we had a single audit this year. What a single audit is, is all political subdivisions in the United States, counties, school districts, cities, townships, boroughs, some non-profits, some companies, which receive more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money, will have a single audit. Why that's important to you is that we take an additional look at compliance with laws and regulations and internal controls at both the financial statement level and the operation of the federal program. What we're pleased to report is that we have no findings in this area, and that's exactly, again, what council should expect to see. Moving to page four, financial statements are divided into two parts. The fund-level statements are the day-to-day operating statements for the city. The focus is on what are known as major funds, and we have four of those: general fund, line usage, capital projects, and debt service. The focus is on the short term. What happened this year with the general fund and the budget? What happened this year with the other fund? And when we start to page five, we'll begin that discussion. General fund last year brought in just a shade less than four point seven million, spent four million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand. Such is the fund balance, went up three hundred and twenty-one thousand last year. The total fund balance at the end of the year, and that's the difference between what we have and what we owe, three hundred and eighty-six thousand. There's a non-spendable portion of that representing prepaid insurance, some inventories and so forth. Such is the unassigned fund balance, what council has to work with heading into the new year, two hundred and ninety-three thousand. Line usage last year, total revenues of two point seven nine, six nine million, almost two point eight. We spent two and a half of that. That fund balance went up two hundred and twenty thousand, currently stands in at a million, four thirty-three. And as we know, it's reserved for sewer repairs and maintenance projects. Page six, capital projects fund, pretty much a dormant fund. It earned a little bit of interest on the money in the bank, sixty-one thousand dollars fund balance there. Debt service fund, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand of revenue. It spent five thirty. That fund balance went up. It currently stands in at eight forty-one. And this is a fund that is accumulating money for the eventual repayment of the ag department loan. The other non-major funds, and these are all the other things we have, parks and recreation, liquid fuel, so on and so forth, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, spent six fifty-nine. Fund balance is there, went down to by thirty-six thousand, total of eleven thousand dollars in all those other funds. History lessons are great. We'll go back to two thousand and sixteen. What you see is the general fund, fund balance history from two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty-three. What's really good is the last two years are green, meaning that we have a positive fund balance. Folks, fund balance is really, really important, and we're going to go to page seven to talk about why it's important. Every one of you runs a business just like the city of Monessa. You have one at your house. I have one at my house. My wife wants a new couch. Do we have a fund balance to pay for the new couch? I don't know. It's our working capital. It's how we pay the bill till the next paycheck comes in. You have to have a fund balance in order to make that work. It's your contingency fund, folks. We live on a river. We have industrial properties here, all of which benefit the city, but they are also prone to a disaster. We need to be ready. If we don't have a contingency fund, we're in trouble. The last thing that the fund balance does is it gives you the ability, the mayor and council, to do the most important job that the voters put you there for, which is to make the city of Monessa better tomorrow than it is today. Without money in the bank, you cannot do that. So if you flip back a page here, this is a nice twin. It makes it very difficult to continue that twin. Cost of everything is going up. I'll go to page nine. Actually, I have two pages seven. Okay, what's the recommended fund balance? Folks, these are the only people in the room that know the answer. And you know why that is? Because they get to raise their own taxes. I never got to raise my own taxes. I had somebody else to do it for me, the school board, my township. They get to do it for themselves. But we can recommend numbers. When you take the total budget, the minimum amount of fund balance recommended, five percent. Ten percent would be better. Given our size... Given our size, fifteen percent would be ideal. The little bar that you see on the far left called fund balance, that, that is what we have. I think that number should be a little bit higher there. But the point is, we're not anywhere near the minimum recommended fund balance. So folks, that's something you need to work on when you start your twenty five budget. Let's look, we have page ten. General Fund, arguably the council's most important decision, is the budget that you pass. Last year, we brought in a hundred and forty one thousand, under what we thought we would. The largest over-budget variance, meaning that we got more than what we thought we would. Local enabling taxes and intergovernmental revenue. Local enabling taxes are the wage tax, transfer tax, LST. Very hard to predict what those are. So you always try to be very conservative and that worked in this case. The largest under-budget variance was noted in real estate and this will be the source of a small recommendation that the general fund not include the debt service piece of the real estate tax in its own budget. It should be moved off to the side. Expenditure budget, we spent two hundred and one thousand more than we thought we would. The largest over-budget was in general government, public safety. The largest under-budget, health and sanitation, highways, community development, and employee benefits and debt service. When we look at page eleven, this is a multi-year history of all the revenues of the, of the city. What you can see here is very, very steady for all the years, except this current year when we picked up additional revenues because we have some grants and so forth that were finally used. When we look at page twelve, you're going to see a similar picture for expenditure, almost steady. The expenditures this year, total for all the funds, seven point four million, almost equal to what they were in twenty twenty one. Page thirteen. We won't spend a lot of time on this, it's hard to read, even with my glasses. But what you see here is a wide variance in the revenues. Real estate tax, up and down, local enabling taxes. What I like here, that's the second set of bars, is a nice steady increase for the past three years. What that indicates is that people are making more money, in general, doing better. When we look at intergovernmental revenues, this is what other governments decide to give us. If they don't want to give us any money, we're not going to have as good a year from one year to the next. The departmental earnings, those refer to the line usage. They refer to city police, if they go out and they work for the school district at a football game, so on and so forth. The garbage collections and so forth, that's all part of that. Page fourteen. Licenses and permits are actually down. Fees and fines and forfeits, those have been going down steadily. Interest and rents way up, but we all know that interest rates are much better today than they were even a couple of years ago. Miscellaneous revenue varies widely by the year. Page fifteen. These are the expenditure numbers. What you'll notice though, general government, and this is what my dad used to call overhead. He would tell clients, overhead kills folk. You spend too much money on things that don't make you any money, that's not a good thing. But when you look at the last three years, the general government cost, meaning cost of council, auditors, engineers and so forth, has actually decreased. Public safety expenditures have gone up, not quite as high as they were in twenty twenty one. Health and sanitation relatively steady. Streets and highways significantly up, that's probably the largest single increase of expenditure fund within the city. Employee benefits and so forth, those are actually down from higher, we can flip back to that, there you go. Those are down from where they were five, six years ago, up slightly this year, but that, given the cost of inflation, not unexpected. So if we go to fifteen, there we go. Community development, that's been falling steadily. Culture and recreation is up over last year. Debt service is up a lot over the year before. So page seventeen. All of our employee benefits, what you're looking at here is the cost of pension, insurance and so forth. The police is in the first column. The MMO has been climbing steadily the last three years. For police, non-uniformed, fairly steady. The fire department, fairly steady. When we look at the medical, dental and so forth, that's actually down a lot from where it was two years ago, three years ago, four years ago. It did go up this past year. Healthcare debit card cost, down significantly from four years ago, but held its own this year. Page eighteen. We'll talk about the management letter. This is a letter that we issued to council and the mayor, talks about a number of things. We've kind of preached fund balance here. I don't want to leave that. We have less than two percent of the budget in fund balance. Not enough money. It just isn't enough money for the size that we are. Investments and cash management, we should be looking for a lot of good opportunities. I would just add a township down in Green County. They're locked into a six-year CD at a bank. I said, well, cast that CD and pay the penalty and reinvest the money, you'll make more. Well, we can do that and it's like, yes, you can do that. So you need to be aggressive and go after those deals while they're here. Internal control, we're small. We cannot possibly afford to hire all the people that it would take to separate every incompatible duty. But what council retains is the power of the post. You sign the check, you look at the documents, maybe you even open the bank statements before anybody else gets them. Very important thing to do. Bookkeeping matters. There are a few inter-fund transfers that need to be cleaned up and that's the main bookkeeping matter that we would bring to your attention. The balance of the management letter talks about a number of things. The first thing that it talks about is risk management. Folks, that's your most important job. Protect what the city has, spend it properly and at the end of the day, tell people what you did. That you have an audit with some unmodified opinion is evidence that you're, from a financial standpoint, achieving that objective of risk management. Those are the things that you need to do as, as city council and the mayor. We had no difficulties in performing the audit. We had no disagreements with management. Our final thanks would be to all the people here that helped us, pulling records and so forth. There was a change of accounting personnel, which made things a little bit difficult. So, but we came through it okay. Our thanks to council, we appreciate the opportunity to be the auditors. If anybody has questions, we'll be happy to answer those.
What do you want me to do?
I already read it. I knew about this earlier.
So your overall assessment?
Till the end. May I ask the council?
Overall?
Greater treatment for the last two years. But this is not going to get any easier. It's just, it's not going to get any easier. Should be happy with what you've done.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
I have one other question.
Okay, go ahead.
It's been brought up in the past about, or there was a question whether there was a, if we've ever had a balanced budget.
Well, for twenty twenty three, the budget was balanced, the one that you passed and the audit report reflects that. I don't have records.
For the prior years?
That I can say, yes, last year was, the year before was, or ten years ago was. But the objective is you have to balance the budget. Now, if that's a legal requirement, I think our solicitor will be happy to answer that.
To have a balanced budget?
Yeah.
If it is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's here, it's not mine.
Will we ask questions now because they can't stick around?
Do you, do you, do you want to answer questions, Stephen?
This happened two, three years ago when people, they ran out of the building.
Well, it's up to them. He has a hearing problem too. Stephen?
I do too, so that's why I didn't identify with it.
Stephen? Would you be willing to entertain some questions from the audience?
That's not my choice.
I have a hearing problem too, so I know I identified with it. My question is, after your audit and the information that you found that had been presented, would you think that Manassas should be looking at Act forty seven at any, any stretch?
I'm not an elected official, I'm the auditor.
Okay, but I, I was and I'm very interested in what they do.
Well. There are advantages to Act forty seven and then there are significant disadvantages to Act forty seven. And I think the people at the table need to evaluate that. The conversation has been, I mean, they've asked us, what do we think? I just, as an auditor, don't feel comfortable saying what my opinion is, but it needs careful evaluation. There are opportunities in an Act forty seven arrangement, if it's handled properly. But folks, just as it is with the school districts, there is no panacea. You bring other people and tell you what.
That's what my concern is because of what that is, if they bring a person that they choose, probably wouldn't make us happy. But, but the other issue is, is that they passed on state grants for two years. That money could have come in and it's not. So that, I mean, I have a newspaper where a neighboring community got LSA. That would have helped us immeasurably and it helped our police departments, fire department, ambulance service, a lot of different areas. That's why I asked about Act forty seven because Mayor Mosher mentioned that the state called him and I don't know if you said recommended, that you go Act forty seven?
That's not, I'd be more than happy to explain it, but that's not the way it happened.
Okay, but you had to contact them.
No.
The state does not go after municipalities or school districts to go after Act forty seven unless they were contacted.
This has nothing to do with the audit. Let's, let's, let's. The audit is not about going Act forty seven. No, the audit says that we made money this, the audit showed that we made, we came out of a positive balance. No, we paid the engineer every penny he's due. No, that's not true.
That is absolutely true.
No, it is not true.
You're not true.
No, it's not true. You're, you don't know the facts on that. Let's, let's, let's move on. Let's move on. This is getting out of control.
You said about the bookkeeping needs to be upgraded?
No, it is, is we need to watch the year of fund variance. So if there's one fund that's moving out of fund, money, that's fun to make, it's over. And for the road fund, I just hope that there's a couple of employees didn't happen. And again, that's why it's in the man's side. So that people take a look at it and say, okay, yeah, we'll make sure we do that.
Is there an abuse in this?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hey, come on.
Wait a minute.
No, 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 you got a line here. You got a line. We're going to continue on.
Steve, thank you.
Thank you very much for your audit.
Thank you very much.
Hey, settle down. Settle down. Settle down.
All right, I'm going to end this meeting then. I can end this meeting by making adjournment and I guarantee everybody will get a second and it'll be the end of all this. No, it's not, but then let's keep the comments to the very end, Mike.
Would you please settle down or leave? You need to leave the, you need to leave the audience here. You need to leave. You are not complying with the orders of the council. Pay attention. Get out of here. Leave. Could you please?
You can't disturb the.
You cannot disturb the meeting. I've asked you for attention several times.
No, no more personal attack. Keep your political things to yourself, keep the comments, please, and don't.
Be quiet. Be quiet. No, he didn't ask her a question. There was no question there. Could you ask him to leave, please?
You are fucking liar. That's what you are, a fucking liar.
Hey, come on.
I'll be back, you asshole.
Wow. Okay, let's continue on here. First off. Let me, let me, let me tell you, everybody, a little bit about what's been going on here in the last few weeks. It's been probably a couple of months ago, we had a meeting in Youngwood and this was, was called to order by the Westmoreland County Redevelopment Authority slash Land Bank. And in the course of this meeting, several things started becoming obvious that were going on. One of which was that, that some of the property that they had acquired was not demo quality, but rather renovation quality. And that one of these buildings happened to be the building at Fourth and Reed. Fourth and Reed used to be an apartment complex. It's got six apartments in there. Each apartment is two bedrooms, has a kitchen, a large living area, a bathroom. It's, it's a, it's a reasonably sized apartment. There's six of these inside that building. Also, at the ground level, there is a, a commercial space there. So in the course of them talking about rehabilitating it, it came to mind that maybe this could become a workforce development project. We have students graduating from high school. Many of these students are not necessarily students that are wanting to go to college. But why not teach them some trades? Maybe construction trades, maybe it's plumbing, maybe it's electrician, maybe it's the real estate trades, maybe it's associated with real estate. Everything from title searches to whatnot. All of this comes to play when you start talking about property. So how do you fund something like this? Well, at that meeting, there happened to be several different people there. There happened to be a representative from HUD and I bounced this idea off of him and I said, is this something that might be, might be of interest to HUD? And he said, absolutely. I talked to our county commissioners and I said, would you be interested in this? Absolutely. I talked to D C E D, absolutely. The point being is, I talked to numerous different people and I was getting nothing but very positive remarks from them that they would be willing to participate in a program that, that was devoted to workforce development for our youth that are coming through the, the system. So I had a meeting this, last week, in fact, yesterday? Wow, time flies. We're having fun. And during this meeting, we had a representative from Senator Reston's office, Senator Conway's office, from, from the federal government. We had the HUD representation. We had all the representation of all the different departments I'm talking about. I've already talked to the school superintendent about that, he's all on board. The point being is, this is going to become a project that has a lot of potential for showing cooperation between the federal government, the state government, the county government and the local, the locals, us here locally, in order to do this. It will be run by a local contractor and I think that this is a, a great project. So that, one of the things that, that is starting to materialize. Part of this also is related. Part of this also is related to what goes on across the street here at Westmoreland Community Action. In, in this meeting today, we will be doing deeds for five properties in, in, uh, in, on Motherall. Now, we've already agreed to sell these properties before, but I wanted them on the agenda because I want everybody to understand what it is we're doing here. By this fall, they will clear off these properties. They'll bring in a crane, and they will use the crane to build modules to build a house. Within a period of a couple of days, there will be five new homes on Motherall. Now, that's great, but they've also committed to doing ten more next year. They're working on ten more. So we're talking about six apartment complexes. We're talking about, uh, you know, fifteen housing. There is construction going on to support the, uh, the population that we have here. At this point, I'd like to ask, uh, Lawrence, if you would, to read my motions?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to make a motion to accept Michael Musino's donation for four, five, zero Chestnut Street, twenty oh-two oh-seven oh-two four-three, for the purpose of returning the parcel to its natural state, contingent on finding no encumbrances relative to the property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? I'd like to explain that this property is actually on Chestnut, but it's a property that's on the hill that ends up on Third Street. And, uh, I think it's to the city's, city's best interest to return this to its natural state to prevent erosion of the hillside, and that's the reason for the motion. Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve and ratify the sale's agreement with Westmoreland County Community Action by deeding over the land at the agreed price of one dollar. Per parcel for properties twenty oh-two oh-seven oh-one four-three, twenty oh-two oh-seven oh-one four-four, and twenty oh-two oh-seven oh-one oh-six, twenty oh-two oh-seven oh-one oh-six, and twenty oh-two oh-seven oh-one oh-five, all on Motherall Avenue, with a commitment to have modular homes constructed in the fall, early fall of twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? These are the five homes, and I think we stuttered on one of the property IDs. But, uh, these are the five properties that they will be building on, on Motherall.
And just to compare it one, it's, these are not modular homes you see on fifty-one or going down the highway.
No, no, these are not mobile homes. They are pre-constructed homes and factories. They're, they're, uh...
I just wanted to, I just wanted to let, let you go out there.
These are gonna be, they're, they're gonna be the same standards. They have to meet the International Building Code as a regular stick-built home. Um, complies with the city zoning ordinance that specifically.
What is the cost for them? Is there any cost to the city?
No. No cost to the city at all. I don't understand your question.
How much after they build the house and how much are they gonna cost?
It will depend on the person. They will be income-based. But you have to have an income. That's the first thing. Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve and ratify the agreement of sale of July twenty, of July sixth, twenty twenty-three, between Westmoreland Human Opportunities, Westmoreland Community Action, and City of Menneson for properties located in City of Menneson. Parcel number twenty oh-two oh-seven oh-one oh-nine, also known as four thirty-seven Motherall Avenue. Parcel number twenty oh-two oh-six oh-four oh-three, also known as six twenty-eighth Ninth Street. And parcel number twenty oh-two oh-six oh-three oh-six, also known as nine thirty McMahon Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? This is the foundation for the ten additional homes they'll be building.
You have a question about that, Mayor? So, say, they built a house, and it's, someone gets it worth whatever by their, uh, income. Are they given, like, a bank, uh, like a mortgage?
Yes.
Okay. Is it, is the property considered theirs?
It, uh, well, it's just like buying any other house now.
Well, I guess what I'm getting to is...
They, first off, listen, first off, it's not just anybody with an income. They have certain guidelines that they have to have people that have a certain level of income before they can buy the house, just like any house you have. Now, they do have subsidies that go along with that.
Yeah, but what I'm getting to is, like, you buy a house, you got a mortgage unless you pay the cash for it.
That's right.
Two years down the road, job changes, life changes, I'm moving.
Right.
Those people, those houses, or can, or we go to a realtor and being sold the same way any other house was?
Yeah, it'd be just like any other house.
Okay. I just was curious on how that worked.
Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to proceed with W E C engineering plans for a winning bid for the Ninth Street sidewalk, employing the services of more neck excavation with a winning unit bid of ten thousand nine hundred ninety dollars, utilizing line usage funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to proceed with W E C engineering plans with a winning bid for the Knox stormpipe and drain, employing more neck excavate, excavation with a winning bid of nine thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, utilizing line usage funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to proceed with W E C's plans with a winning bid for the spring drive-storm inlet box, employing the services of Carmella Construction with a lump sum winning bid of seven thousand one hundred dollars, utilizing line usage funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to hire Valerie Bednar as a part-time police officer within the City of Menneson at a rate of twenty-one dollars and fifty cent per hour, contingent on the completion of all appropriate related employment testing. Civil service testing has been completed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to reaffirm the appointment of Alan Duncan Senior to the Police Accountability and Internal Affairs Board with a term ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to affirm the appointment of Robert Stark to the Police Accountability and Internal Affairs Board, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to consider open bids from July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at two o'clock P M for the approval and purchase of a Public Works twenty twenty-three Ford F-five-fifty dump truck vehicle.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I don't know if there needs to be a motion rather than a discussion here.
Yeah, we're just talking, we're just, we're looking at the bids. We weren't actually making the action to do something.
Okay, well, after you do the second, we can have a discussion. We can always table it. Is that correct?
Yeah, we could say that.
That's fine.
Okay. Well, let's talk about it, then. Go ahead. Do you want me to talk?
I, I did the back work. I didn't, you wanna talk ahead?
Okay, well, first off, just so everybody understands, we have four two, twenty sixteen, one-ton F-five-fifty dump trucks, and one twenty-eleven F-five-fifty dump truck. The twenty-sixteens typically have, on the average, about thirty-five thousand miles. That's all. The twenty-eleven has about fifty thousand miles. That's all. Now, one of the twenty-eleven vehicles started running with very poor power, and we put a requisition in, and that's gone through the system here to get it repaired. It turns out that it has a bad turbo. About four thousand dollars to get that truck fixed. The other truck is something that is questionable whether it's worthwhile fixing it or not. And what I've really asked to do is to get together with our streets department, get that inside the shop, put it up on the lift, and let's look at the frame. Let's look at the body. Let's look at all parts of it, make sure that this truck would be a usable truck that would be worthwhile putting, getting it repaired. If it can be repaired, then it would be my recommendation to council that we, that we take action to get it repaired. One of the other things that came out of this discussion was that if we can come up with the money, and I think that either way we work this, we can figure out a way to come up with the money. Roads are the, by far, the most important thing to peoples in the City of Menneson. Our roads are pitiful. There's no denying that whatsoever. We've got to come up with a way to get these roads fixed. Working with the, uh, streets department, and I, I, I think that Rodney and I had a very good coming to the minds, to be honest with you. He agreed to work with the union to allow us to hire some part-time employees, that we could get some hot patch material, not cold patch, but hot patch material. Put it in, take a, a pothole, clean it all out real well, apply a tacking agent to it, put, fill it with, with hot patch, and then compact it with a compactor, with a vibrating compactor, to pack it down such that you have a one-time, one-done repair of that pothole. You don't worry about scraping it up when the plows come along. In fact, what you worry about is the road around that pothole degrading because you have new road here where you fill the pothole, and the rest is, is still old road. It is not a panacea for a perfect road. There's no doubt about that. But it will be something to get rid of some of the massive potholes that we have cropping up throughout town, and it's a major problem. Just so everybody understands, W E C has also been authorized to work with, to, uh, continue with a C D B G project to repave Third Street from the Third Street extension down to Schoonmaker. And he's gone, going out for bid on that.
Let's contain this to the truck.
Okay, but this is all part of it, and I, I'll try to get back onto it, okay? But the bottom line is that how we handle the truck is, I just simply wanting to have some time to evaluate this truck before we go forward with buying a new one or repairing the old one, either way.
What's the schedule on that?
I'd like to get that done in the next couple of weeks, as fast as we possibly can.
Before, before the ne, before the next, next meeting?
I will do my best. It's function getting Rodney and getting the garage space and so forth. They're, uh, they've got a, two trucks that they've got the front end apart on. Now they're doing the ball joints on. So it's, it's a little bit hectic in the garage right now. I don't think there'll be a problem in doing that, though.
How do you feel about that, Karen? You know, you're part of Pub, Public Works, too.
I think it's a good idea that you meet with Rodney and that, you know, he advise, advises you on it, and I think looking at them, 'cause I have no mechanical background, but I think, I always think you put the decision-making in the hands of the people who use the equipment because they know the most about it, and, and they have to live with whatever choices we make. Long after we might be gone, the younger guys still have to, to live with decisions we make. So I think it should be a real thoughted, a well-thought-out process.
Anybody else, have anything else? At this point, I'd like to make a motion to, to, uh, table this.
Second.
Any questions about that?
Just like to make sure that they, or Rodney, and Hapo, all the crew are totally involved with this whole process because they're the ones that do their job daily.
I agree one hundred percent.
And I don't, I wouldn't wanna drive a car that doesn't work well. I'm afraid it's gonna break down every day.
I agree one hundred percent.
So, um, they need to be involved every step of the way, and we really need to listen to what they say.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. I'm calling.
Call the roll, please.
Wait, one last thing.
Okay.
We need to all keep one thing straight, and it's bouncing around here. And, and, and nobody's staying on focus. The question is not, we have four trucks, four trucks, they're having a problem, they need repairs. That is not an issue. That is not what this discussion is about. That's a foregone conclusion that we get our damn trucks fixed. Okay, and I think we've all agreed to that and said that many times we've beat it to death.
It's the fifth truck we're talking about.
Still had another one.
I'm talking, this is about ordering, getting, purchasing a brand-new truck to augment their fleet. I'll say, and with the additional fork that they have, that'll be brought up to safety spec, make sure they're all working, there's no rust, there's no other problems. That's what this is about. We need to be clear on that, 'cause we've been bouncing around all over the place with this and not, and not hitting the bullseye here.
Okay.
And this kinda stuff is out of our control. Because again, and I'm not saying it has to be me, but I could go down and I know what roughly, what makes sense, or what their wish list, or what they have come back and forth with. Finding the vehicle, if it's even available, is another whole thing. Because production times and everything else, we could say, okay, we're specking this out, we're doing this, we're placing an order for this, and we may not get it for six months. So there's gonna have to be some discussion and give and take a little bit. I, my, my premise is find something that's sitting on a lot, brand-new, ready to go, that they could use. That's the premise I have always approached this on. Now, if someone else wants to tell me something different, please do, because I, I am not aware of it.
Okay, well, there's two motions and two seconds.
There's a motion that's to table right now.
Okay, there's a motion to table it.
It's been seconded.
It has been seconded. Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes. Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna make a vote on it next meeting.
You want me to continue?
Okay. Motion to approve placement of a one-way and left-turn-only signs at appropriate locations near the S P H S Health Facility and Housing Complex, and for a right-turn-only sign near the exit of the Alfonso Billik Funeral Home parking lot.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve the PennDOT Engineering and Construction Management System Agreement and Resolution at no cost to the city to permit the ci, the city to sign up for the construction services system.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes. And I've pretty much discussed the workforce development project, so we'll skip that.
Okay. Motion to approve USDA requisition and certificate number twenty in the amount of two hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and eighty-five cent for Phase Three construction work performed during March of May and June of twenty twenty-four. All invoices are attached to Exhibit A for the review of council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilman Orzizjatsky to, uh, give us his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone? Thank you, Louis. Motion to pay the following invoices from the General Fund in the amount of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventeen cents. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's Attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Fund in the amount of $1,841.86. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's Attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Liquid Fuels Fund in the amount of $12,477.85. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's Attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Recreation Account Fund in the amount of $412.15. All invoices are attached to this Attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Line Usage Account in the amount of $12,670. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's Attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Grant Fund in the amount of $2,401.27. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's Attachment F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the American Rescue Fund in the amount of $591.42. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's Attachment G.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the transfer of $73,994.97 from the General Fund to the Payroll Account to cover payroll expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to transfer from the General Fund to the Healthcare Account $10,687 for prior payroll period dated July 3, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to transfer $2,500 from the General Fund to the Healthcare Account for payroll period from July 3, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
And the following are the the funds left in all the accounts. American Rescue Fund, $156,065.70. Debt Service has $1,243,262.40. Jeez, getting bad. Yeah, it's really small. Fire Escrow Fund has $21,637.40. General Fund has $958,153.03. Grant Fund has $64,638.70. Healthcare has $11,818.60. Line Usage has $680,881.38. Liquid Fuels has $93,816.12. Parks Fund has, really? Parks Fund has $183,616. Payroll has $19,847.80. The Recreation Fund has $5,212.71. And the Refuge Fund has $204,453.64. And Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilperson Thomas for her report.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, I'd like to just defer reading the Streets and Public Improvement Report for the month ending June 30, 2024, until our next council meeting on the 25th of this month.
Okay, thank you. John Nestor, do you have a report?
Honorable Mayor, members of council, administrative staff, citizens of Menneson, I do have a report for May. Since I was physically not here, but over the phone, I feel it's appropriate that I give the report for May today. Following is the Police Department receipts for the for the month of May, 2024. Parking and fines and forfeits, $50. Miscellaneous collections are the following: copies of police accident reports, $300. Meter bags, 18. Total miscellaneous collections altogether, $318. Court receipts for District District Justice Office are the following: vehicle code fines collected, $585.58. Crime code fines collected, $305.34. Code enforcement collected, $125.33. Total receipts for the District Justice Office is $1,016.25. Total receipts collected for May, 2024, $1,384.25. Citations for May, 2024 is a total of 63, year-to-date, 308. All right. Code activity report for May, 2024 is the following: habitation permits, 12. Correction letters, 33. Animal complaints, 2. Miscellaneous complaints, 10. Health inspections, 4. Office meetings with residents, 5. Citations issued, 5. Hearings, 0. Building permits, 4. Zoning permits, 3. The miscellaneous remain like grass, noise, abandoned vehicles, and homes. The following is the Menneson Municipal Fire Chief's report for May, 2024. Vehicle accidents, 2. Fire, electrical fires, 3. Trees down, 3. Mock DUI drill, 1. Structure fires, 1. Medical assistance, 2. Automatic automatic fire alarms, 4. Carbon monoxide, 3. Wires down, 2. Calls outside the city. Structure fire, Carroll Township, 1. Structure fire North Belverne, 1. Structure collapse, Shalory, 1. Natural gas call, Ross Draver Township, 1. Total calls, 25. Total firefighters, 219. Firefires per call, 8.76. Total man-hours, 229. I would like to also thank the firefighters for their assistance on the fire that we had on Ninth Street, which were Carroll Township, Shalory, North Belverne, Denora, Washington Township, Bentleyville Fire Rescue, and the City of Menneson's Police Department. I'd like to thank them for all their time and their gratitude for helping out the city. I'd like to thank the Salvation Army for for serving the drinks and food to the first responders. I also like to thank the Mid-Mond Valley Transit Authority, who housed and bussed the fire first responders to stay cool and safe while battling the structure fires. More importantly, I'd like to thank Municipal Chief Heppel for his leadership skills and quick response. Thank you, Chief. And also, I'd like to thank my mom and wish her a happy birthday. Today's her birthday, so.
Very good.
Other than that, I yield the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Karen? Councilperson Karen, would you like to give your report?
I would like to defer my report to the next meeting on July 25.
Okay. Does the council have any other business they'd like to talk about?
No, Mayor.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment directed to myself on any related matters to business, ordinances, statutes, resolutions, or daily work product, and the attention of the city of Menneson.
Ted Harhi, Helen Avenue. I'd ask a question about Donald Blizzi Byer. As of last month, he is not a licensed registered plumber in the state of Pennsylvania.
You want me to repeat it? I'll repeat it, and I think you heard it. Secondly, I've been riding by Schoonmaker daily, obviously. There's a sign for sale between Third and Second towards Councilman Nestor's home there. It's a yard sign, and it has Lou Maveracus's telephone number on it. If it's a redevelopment authority property, it should be, there should be a large sign normally, kind of like the sign you have across the street that has the USDA stuff on it, but obviously for redevelopment authority. Next, I think it's good that you're moving on that Motherwell project, and I just don't understand why you and Lou Maveracus keep meeting with Yurum, because he wants to do low-income housing and apartments. And that's not what we need in Menneson. I would yield to Mike Korpash, is that part of your comprehensive plan?
First off, I've not had any meetings with Matt Yurum in two, three years now. I've not talked to the man, I've not met with him.
He was in this building twice within the last three months.
Not to see me. That was to see the redevelopment authority.
Okay. You what?
He hasn't been to see me.
Okay, okay. But I don't know why we're entertaining and why you're letting Maveracus run the show here with this stuff. Now, that property's for sale. Why isn't there a bigger sign, or is it not for sale?
That's redevelopment.
Or is he playing his own game?
That's redevelopment authority property, and that was to take it up with them.
A yard sign. We can't. He doesn't answer any questions. He doesn't have an agenda.
Come to their meetings.
He doesn't answer questions. Well, other guys go, Ernie goes, you know, goes. He won't answer. They don't have an agenda, they don't answer questions. He said he doesn't have to answer questions. That's what Ernie, that's what you told me. One, just a quickie. The Viaduct, I got a $500,000 grant that former Mayor Lou Maveracus turned down in 2015 or 16, when Councilwoman at that time, Lucille Delfonso, we could have fixed that for 500,000. I've heard that it's upwards of 1.8 million now to fix that. Is that correct? Is that a ballpark near there that you're aware of?
I haven't seen the the numbers myself, so I don't know.
I mean, it's astronomical. I know from one of the time, we could have done it, and it wasn't, you know, it was free state money, so.
So right now, it will be free federal money passed on to the state to do with the work that we're doing right now. That's what they're proposing to do right now.
That's my next question. Are we getting any money from the state yet?
Yes, it's coming from the federal government to PennDOT to 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 this.
Shifting shifting back when I said we got no money from Senator Ward, we got no money from Representative Vanzo. Is it in the works that we have a shot at getting something?
Yes.
I have an ad, an article in the paper, Ross Draver had five different LSA grants, all 76,000 and higher. I think one was 143,000. We're missing the boat. The other thing is, you had mentioned 20% that was charged by Urban Design Ventures. Then 18% was printed in the paper. I did the figures, I got the information. The highest they charged was 12.5%.
That is not right.
That is correct.
No, I've got the numbers.
I did it. I got the numbers, and I got somebody that's.
I'm sorry, but I've got different numbers than you do.
They're not 20%. I think in order to get R V S in the door, for some odd reason, we're taking care of somebody. Don't know why, don't know how. It's one of those behind-the-scenes deals. But we should never have gotten rid of Urban Design Ventures, because they were on the spot. We got them, and to say that, well, if they don't provide the grant, then we don't pay them. That's not good enough. We need the grants to continually come in, especially C D B G. I have a lot more, but it's, I've had enough.
Linda Lacy, Maple Avenue. I just have three questions. Who enforces the dog leash law?
Code enforcement? Who enforces the dog leash law?
It would be the police department that would see dogs running around without a leash.
They'd call animal control.
Well, you can't have the police looking for dogs without a leash. I mean, isn't there something you can put in the paper that says that in the city of Menneson, your dog has to be on a leash? It can't be roaming around in the neighborhood?
Responsible dog ownership is, you always have control of your dog.
Well, yeah, I think somebody should put that in the paper.
Okay.
Number two is, who is responsible for cutting the grass on Sixth Street across from or next door to that church that's on Sixth Street that they had to tear down for an emergency? They said the lot hasn't been cut for a year or two.
You're talking about in front of the church?
The the empty lot on Sixth Street and Schoonmaker and Donner, right there, where the nail salon is and the church. And Douglas is his apartment.
Yeah, right. Departments are right in front of it, the empty lot in between.
It's right across from Janusix Drugstore.
It's that empty lot.
Next, A. J.
Yeah, right here.
Where the church is.
There you go, brother.
Who's responsible for that?
I'd have to find out whose property that is. I don't know offhand.
Well, it's, okay. It was an emergency tear-down. I mean, your memory is very short. It just happened a couple.
The problem is, I don't know if the property ever transferred hands from the owner to the
It didn't.
the land bank, and it would be the the owner who owns the lot.
Well, he didn't even pay his taxes, so why is he going to cut the grass?
Exactly.
Good question.
Good question, but it's still his property.
Oh, so we're going to let it be overgrown there? People go to church there, people go to Janusix, they go to Pam's shop, they go get their nails done, and we got in downtown a lot that's overgrown.
That is a a serious problem. There's no doubt about it. But to be honest with you, people walk away from a house, it gets abandoned, it gets blighted, it gets torn down. It is still their property. It doesn't matter if it's a business, but it's still their property. They are still responsible for it. We go over there and start doing it, that's actually trespass.
Well, somebody needs to do it, because I have merchants calling me, and I'm not even on city council. They're they're calling me saying, what is the city doing about this lot and other various lots?
I'm very open to ideas, but I don't know the answer to this question, how to solve this problem.
About my school and all that other stuff. Okay, on page two, what is Westmoreland Human Opportunities, Inc.? What is that?
That's Community Action.
Community Action, yes.
They do business as community.
Oh, they are the two names?
Oh, that's their corporate name, Joe, I believe.
Yes, it is.
Doing business as community foundation.
Okay, now, I see McMahon on this list up under page two, item D. There's been a sidewalk that needed to be replaced for about 2015. I think that's when Morgan ran over it with his machines and knocked down the whole curb when they had that sinkhole up on McMahon and Tenth Street that has never been replaced. And now you're going to talk about building houses on McMahon when there is a school stop right there at Tenth and McMahon. There's a bus stop there, a school bus stop right there on the corner of Tenth and McMahon. So if kids are coming from one part of McMahon where they're going to walk in the street, because they can't walk on that sidewalk, it's been like that ever since 2000, what, 15, 16?
This is property that Community Action's going to be building on?
Well, it doesn't matter. It's all McMahon. It's it's a sidewalk on McMahon that you're going to be building on McMahon. Maybe it's the first part of McMahon that comes off of Sixth Street. I don't know. But what I'm saying is, the sidewalk never got fixed, and there's a school bus stop right across the street from there. And I have come down here with this more than once, because somebody was supposed to get after Morgan to replace it, and they never did. And that's before Chevelli died. So, I mean, it's just over and over and over again. I come down here and I make my statements, and it's not complaining, because whatever I come down here, it's for my whole community, not for me, because I police my street. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ernie.
Thank you. I have two suggestions.
I have two suggestions. One, whenever you people, everybody on council, second, third, fourth, emotions, like the Madison, like Michael Moore, like anything else. I don't see no council members going there.
Yeah, we can hear the city with the city.
Yeah, so the, the mayor, of course, shows up, but Karen only went to one, but there's like three events that went by.
I was at both of them.
You were both of them? Okay, I know you were at Madison.
I was up there too.
Oh, you were up there, okay.
She saw me there.
Okay, because I didn't see you. I saw her. She was sitting.
I saw you, Ernie.
How come you didn't say hello? Karen said hello to Mary Jo. But anyway.
Those were events that were actually organized by somebody other than the city council, I might point out also.
Yeah, but you guys also made a pro...
We, all we did was allow them to, to be used in a public park. And yes, they are a public thing, and I went to it because I believe in it and I support it.
I'm saying the rest of the council members.
Mandatory overtime.
The schools.
Mandatory overtime.
The schools did. That was the school system.
And house hunting. I'm not going to lie, house hunting, too.
I, I had picked you out, and I just said...
Well, I just wanted to explain. Yeah, I just wanted to explain.
I didn't want to bring Tony's name in. Okay, but anyway.
I just answered it.
What question? The question I answered? Asked?
About the sidewalk? I didn't answer that one.
Okay, so I...
There's too many people talking, so let's do one at a time.
Yeah, I have another question. I don't know if it's the treasurer or the CFO. Is there any way you could show us this amount of money? Like Cypher, Cypher was saying that twenty-twenty-three looked good, okay? That's what he said.
Mm-hmm.
It, it balanced. Is there any way you could demonstrate? Because I'm under the impression less people or less property owners paid more than having more property owners paying their share due. So what I'm trying to say is, in twenty-twenty, maybe there was like, for instance, a thousand property owners. But in twenty-twenty-three, there was eight hundred property owners, but they coughed up more money. And I just want to see if we're following a decreasing curve here or slope. Because if that's the case, then we're never going to catch up. If less and less people are paying in...
Need a copy of the presentation?
Yeah, could I have it?
Sure.
But does that say that, like...
Well, no, no. Well, Ernie, it's the same thing I've been saying all along. The city is suffering a population decline. This been, this has started happening in the nineteen fifties. One and a half percent every year. If this continues, this place will be a ghost town.
So the solution should be then, or they're dressed...
That we've got to do something to change something. We've got to work together, we've got to figure out a way to, to work together.
And I've been hoping for twelve years, the only way we could do this is bring industry in. We have to bring employment.
All different kinds of industry. It might be a grocery store, it might be a manufacturing, it might...
That's not an industry grocery store. That's retail.
Believe it or not, well, but retail hires more people than most industry does.
Yeah, they come and go. They're, they're, you can't...
Industry comes and goes, too.
No.
That's what the problem is with Monessin. It left.
Well, and why is it based on a, a tax base? Look what happened to Greensboro. They gave all the taxes for free to Volkswagen.
I'll tell you what, Ernie, I'll tell you what, Ernie. Next, next Thursday, a week from now, let's go back to our, our town hall. And let's make this a subject that we'll figure out a way to, to, to bring people in the city, because it's necessary. I agree.
We have a decreasing contributor.
I agree.
And they're kicking up more.
I agree.
That's it, but that was waiting for your three-month period here, Mr. Saxon.
Three months? You got a six-month. See, I increased the budget.
Any other comments?
Chief has one.
Delmore Hepple Municipal Fire Chief. First off, I want to say, John, thanks for the kind words. In order for something to work well, we have to all work together. You have to be on the same page. And I think the fire departments are on the same page. That's why things seem to flow better. Doesn't have so much to do with me being a great leader, but having everybody on the same page, it flows better. Ted was talking about the LSA money, and actually, I think we're all on the same page now. And, you know, I stood here and complained about it last year, but we weren't all on the same page. I've been working with Mike and Joe here and with, meeting with the mayor last week. I think everyone's on the same page. Hopefully, we'll get a good shot at this. We'll get this done. I talked to Joe about some resolutions and stuff tonight. And hopefully, for the betterment of the fire department and the city, we'll get this done.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks again, John.
No, thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Christina Campbell. I live at six twenty-eight McKee Ave. I have a few questions. So I have been, I just moved here about a year ago from Philadelphia. And, and, thank you. In Philadelphia, I have ran a youth as well as senior and adult programs for seventeen years, and it has brung those communities together tremendously. So for, I would say about the last year, I've been trying to get into your civic center. And it's not happening. So I'm try, I have, I have these things. I would like some emails that I can send them to everybody up here and whoever I need to speak to. So I would like to do a arts and craft program. I would like to do a senior zumba program, a painting program for adults. I do tumbling, I do after-school homework help. We don't have any of these programs here. Those kids, I actually get those kids where we come together and we have a picnic and we clean the park. You understand, one, you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours type of thing? So those are things, and I'm just wondering, we don't have fireworks here. We don't have anything down on that boat dock thingy down there where bands are playing, like I see in Minnehahailla. Like those, it, it's a sense of community, and I don't, I, I plan to stay here until I die, so I'm not moving. I put way too much money into this house. So what can we do as, as a team to make this happen? Because all I hear is, no, 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 no. Like I'm not even given the opportunity to, to prove myself and what I bring to the table. So I, I would like to know, what do I need to do and who do I need to talk to? Because whoever I'm talking to is not getting me where I need to go.
So as we've talked about this before, first off, council has to find a rec board. And the rec board is supposedly responsible for what goes on at the civ, at the civic center. Now, we've had a few unfortunate issues with the, the gentleman that's been running it. He's in the hospital right now, I do believe.
Correct.
And that's somewhat of an issue right now. But to be honest, I would like to see you get together with the rec board and get this to happen. I think it's wonderful.
I just need name and number. I'll be there as soon as possible. Yes, Ms. Linda.
Who?
Ms. Turner.
No, I don't know that anybody's taken over for Julian.
Nobody's taken over?
No. Teresa's there. Is that correct?
What's her other last name?
She's there, and she's helping.
Her name is, it starts with a Q.
Yeah, yeah, you know.
She's not on the board.
About to care. You're talking about to care.
Yes.
Yeah.
I thought, I heard that she was taking over for Julian.
There's not been any decision by council to do that that I'm aware of.
Not at the moment.
Okay, if Ms. Christine has been talking to somebody down at the civic center, and you guys got to okay it, why is she talking to them?
She needs to talk to the rec board. The rec board is the people that needs to be, needs to be involved in this. There is a rec board. They're not disbanded.
But okay, oh, wait, Ernie, do you mean to tell me that you, that Christine needs to talk to the rec board, and the rec board talks to you?
The rec board.
So you have a final say?
The rec board determines what happens at the civic center. We hired Julian to re, to work with the rec board to, to streamline that process. Right.
Julian. And this is, he's only been sick for a month, and I do wish him well, but I've been asking for a year.
But what is his reasoning for telling you no?
Well, one room, we can't use it... No, one room we can't use because when he has parties, that's where people eat, but yet you have a kitchen. Then the other one is a foosball table that's not being used by any of the youth. We don't have any programs down there but basketball. I volunteered to give out the food. That's not happening. I volunteered for the program that was down there, which, mind you, I spent a couple hundred dollars on face paint, and I got a call two days before this event saying it was canceled.
So I'm going to assign this to Mike.
And I, I was...
Why don't you work with Mike and let him, let him, let him try to be the, the, the vocal point?
Okay. Will do, will do.
Also, kids involved, we probably should get clearances.
I have child abuse, FBI, all that. I'm certified coach. I have all that.
We probably should have it on our records.
I have it. I have it ready, ready to go. So...
It might be vacancies.
Might be, might be.
Yes.
Okay.
I can do this blindfolded.
Christine, do you have an email?
I do, I do.
After the meeting, I'll grab it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Is there a motion to adjourn? Oops, sorry.
Karen. Oh, Mary Ann Sevek, here's a highlight of what she wants to talk to you about. She'll give you all the details.
What's the stat, what's the status down there?
On what?
Since you're in charge of all the buildings.
We're managing data.
Just library. We'll start with you. We can work with you.
It's been two council meetings since we were supposed to get...
She can talk to, and I said, start with Karen, get her comments.
And it's done. It's done. It's done.
It's done?
It's done.
I told you last meeting.
Yeah, no, no. I, I, I will, I will post this on the web, but, yeah, I've got to get these to DCD and people like that. That's, that's what those go to.
Mayor, this meeting's not adjourned yet. Councilman Orvachowski has something to state. This meeting's not over yet.
Please sit down.
Okay, so the room is done?
The room is done.
The room is done. So what's the status on getting the other equipment out of the way so we can put up the ping-pong tables and everything else? Is that done?
Yes. Yeah, a lot of that has been moved, and the rooms are getting much better and more organized. But Julian hasn't been a part because of his illness.
I understand, but this is the first time I'm hearing of this.
Hearing of what?
Of any of this work being done.
Okay, well, it's, it's in pretty good, under pretty good control.
It was all done.
There's a lot more to do.
There's always work to do there. There's no doubt about that.
Well, yeah, if you want to, yeah, yeah, there is. Karen, Karen has been following this, too, with what CTC is doing with her summer program there.
Teresa Say has a summer program at the civic center, and she uses a lot of those rooms. And one of the rooms that she needed for her youth was the room where all that equipment was in. So that was all moved out for now. When she's finished, it will be moved back into that room and available for the, you know, the young people to use.
One of the other last conversations was that the key lock needed to get changed.
And it does. It does.
Was it?
Yes.
Did Karen get a key that she requested?
Yes.
Just, when did I get that? Tuesday.
When you came...
Tuesday. I got it Tuesday. I have it, and it works. I had an opportunity to use it today.
Okay, I just, what was in this stuff ever conveyed to us?
All right, let's try this again.
Yeah, try it again.
Mayor, motion to adjourns tonight, adjourn tonight's meeting, Thursday, July eleventh, at eight twelve PM Eastern Standard Time.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
No, I don't. I've got my wallet for me. I'm pinching, I'm pinching Penny's...